So, alright, well, let's start with a word of prayer, then we'll jump into talking about prophecy. That came up at the end of class last time, and then back into chapter 11. So, please pray with me. Lord God, we thank you for another time to come and study your word, and we pray for your blessing on this time together. Father, please allow your spirit to guide and direct us. Help us to read your word responsibly, and to translate it into our lives, Father, that we would be changed, continually being transformed into the image of your son. Father, for the call that you have placed on each and every one of us, I pray that in the study of your word, that even individually, give us that burden for where we need to change and where we need to include, and be more intentional about furthering your kingdom. Father, we thank you for your plan of redemption. I feel that it's important to keep that in front of us because what we're reading through here tonight, a lot of it is just so difficult, but ultimately, it is a part of your plan of redemption. And Father, I pray that you would help us to keep that in view. We love you and we thank you, and we pray everything in Jesus's name. Amen. Alright, so prophecy, this came up at the end there of last week, and so, just a couple definitions from the Lexham, L-E-X-H-A-M, Lexham Bible Dictionary. There's a Lexham Bible, which is actually really good. If you've never heard of that, don't just go out and buy one, but look it up online, and BibleStudyTools.com is a great place, Bible Gateway, you can find that translation in there. But it's a little bit of a differently read, it's way more literal, but yeah, it's a, yeah, I find it refreshing, and every once in a while I'll jump to it. But anyways, they, the Lexham Bible Dictionary defines prophecy as "an oral divine message mediated through an individual that is directed at a person or people group and intended to elicit a specific response." Yeah, an oral or divine message, an oral divine message mediated through an individual that is directed at a person or people group intended to elicit a specific response. So there's some pretty key pieces there, right? So, it's an oral message, divine, and it is to a person or a group, but look at the whole reason, it's to get a response, a specific response. There's a very specific direction as a result of receiving this message that somebody need, or a group, needs to move or act upon. So, I don't know how far you want to get into this, but the Wycliffe or Wickliffe Bible Encyclopedia defines prophecy, "In the Old Testament specifically, prophetic oracle or message to be delivered to the people was conceived of as a burden, a burden," in the Hebrew massah, "on the soul of the prophet until he could utter it." Scripture references for this, Proverbs chapter 30 verse 1, and Proverbs 31 verse 1, also Isaiah 13 verse 1, and Habakkuk chapter 1 verse 1. Also, the word nabu'a, related to nabi', prophet, is used. The New Testament term, let's see, "which can refer to prophetic activity or prophesying, to the gift of prophecy or prophesying, and to the prophetic utterances." So, functions of prophecy include forthelling. So the prophets were first of all forthellers and spokesmen for God. Abraham had received and announced the covenant which God had made with him concerning his seed. Moses, as the greatest of all the prophets, was to receive the word directly from God's mouth and pass it on to Aaron, who is to be his spokesman, Exodus 7. "Since Moses was to be Pharaoh's god, Aaron's ministry demonstrates perfectly the ministry of the spokesman. All who act in the capacity of proclaiming the word of God are his spokesman. It is in this sense that the New Testament believer may prophesy when directed and empowered by the Holy Spirit." In the designation of the Old Testament as law and the prophets, the writers of all the books subsequent to the Pentateuch or the Torah are classified as prophets. They were prophets in the sense that they recounted history, manifested God's glory in praise and song, revealed his wisdom, and delivered his warnings of judgment and promises of restoration, all as God's inspired spokesmen. So, I think that was pretty all encompassing of the forthelling, right? And I think a lot of times, the foretelling gets a lot more of the publicity, right? And especially as we're in a book such as Revelation. But it's the forthelling that we see most often throughout Scripture and as employed as a prophetic gift. So it's just speaking the truth of God. It's a divine message that has been received to be passed along to somebody or a group. Any questions on any of that? Yes?
Can you just give us a quick difference in foretelling and forthelling?
Yeah, foretelling is like foretelling the future. So that where that message is maybe for that specific person or group, but it's about a future event or occurrence. Now, where that line kind of gets a little bit blurred is that message of repentance, repent or else. Repent or else this is going to happen. Hmm, okay, so, odds are, they're not going to repent, you know? And so all of a sudden, that forthelling just kind of turned into foretelling, right? So, but at its core, that was, that message of repentance is forthelling. So, so forthelling, foretelling. Ethical and social teaching is another option. "The ministry of the prophet has been all too often ignored in the studies of evangelical scholars. Moses's first attempt to help his brethren was in the social sphere, Exodus 2. Later he was guided of God to set up the great theocratic principles of social and economic justice found especially in Exodus and Deuteronomy. Amos was the Old Testament prophet who stressed his function of prophecy in particular as he revealed the social injustices in the northern kingdom. Hosea reflects similar teaching as does also Isaiah." Number four, political influence. So this is also often overlooked. Moses received a commission to demand the release of Israel by Pharaoh. So, that's kind of an interesting take for its political influence. "Nathan was to appear before David. Isaiah confronted King Ahaz and advised Hezekiah. Jeremiah was commanded to appear before the king at different times. Daniel appeared before Nebuchadnezzar and Belshazzar. Amos's message reached the king through one of his ministers." And then fifth, a soteriological message, or one of salvation. The most important ministry performed by the prophet was that of giving message of salvation. "In this respect, the minister of the gospel follows in his footsteps. Constantly the prophets warn the people of their sins and urge them to repent. We find such examples as Joshua calling upon Israel to choose whom they would serve. Moses gave the blessings and curses followed by a plea to repent, which would only be fulfilled finally as God led them to repentance at Christ's second coming, Deuteronomy 28:1. Jonah called on Nineveh to repent within forty days. Ezra prayed for those who had returned from exile to confess their sins and put away their foreign wives. John the Baptist exhorted Israel to prepare a highway in their hearts for the coming of their king." So, which some of that could easily be the forthelling, kind of splitting some hairs there, but altogether. So, any questions on prophecy? So, a lot of these directly translate into New Testament contexts as well, with different giftings. I especially enjoyed the Hebrew idea of the prophetic message as burden. It's a burden that the prophets had held, and feeling that burden to share that message with those individuals that they've been instructed to. So, I mean, there's, yeah.
Question?
Yep.
Two questions.
So, how do we know if somebody is a false prophet? I would turn your attention to Deuteronomy 13. It's like the Lord anticipated this, right? Deuteronomy 13, let's see, we could probably just stick 1 through 9. So if a prophet or a dreamer of dreams arises among you and gives you a sign or a wonder, and the sign or the wonder comes true concerning which he spoke to you, saying, "Let us go after other gods whom you have not known, and let us serve them. You shall not listen to the words of that prophet or that dreamer of dreams; for Yahweh your God is testing you, testing you, to find out if you love Yahweh your God with all of your heart and with all of your soul. You shall follow Yahweh your God and fear him, and you shall keep his commandments, listen to his voice, serve him, and cling to him. But that prophet or that dreamer of dreams shall be put to death because he has counselled rebellion against Yahweh your God, who has brought you from the land of Egypt and redeemed you from the house of slavery to seduce you from the way in which Yahweh your God commanded you to walk. So you shall purge the evil from among you. If your brother, your mother's son, or your son, or your daughter, or the wife you cherish, or your friend, who is as your own soul entice you secretly, saying, 'Let us go and serve other gods whom neither you nor your fathers have known, of the gods of the peoples who are around you, near you, or far from you, from one end of the earth to the other end, you shall not yield to him or listen to him, and your eye shall not pity him, nor shall you spare or conceal him. But you shall surely kill him; your hand shall be first against him to put him to death, and afterward the hand of all the people.'" So, boy, that's pretty severe. But, look at that initial message. If it comes true, that's irrelevant. If what they say happens, that is irrelevant, it's what is their message in obeying the Lord. That's the test. Now, if it doesn't come true, you don't worry about it. They're just wrong, and maybe they were looking for the attention, whatever. But look at this. If it does come true, see it directly as a test from God. Somebody performs a miracle, and everybody's just losing their minds over it. Our first thought should be, okay, what is God doing here? God could have easily given that person the ability to do it. That's not the test. The test is, oh, what's their message? Oh, let's all become Buddhists. Let's all go follow Muhammad. Let's go, whatever it might be. Boy, and somebody just came in right as I said that. That is not my message tonight. And it happens to be an elder. Alright. We're recording.
Make sure you didn't get it.
And so, so the main test here, and so, as we come back to, we're in Deuteronomy 13. "You shall follow Yahweh your God and fear him, and you shall keep his commandments, listen to his voice, serve him, and cling to him." And if you back up that one verse, "you shall not listen to the words of that prophet or that dreamer of dreams; for Yahweh your God is testing you to find out if you love Yahweh your God." Like, I mean, what a test. Do we love the Lord, or do we just love the miracles? So in our Western scientific minded culture, and we start seeing miracles, oh man, how many Christians are just gonna lose their mind, go off the deep end, and follow whoever and whatever they're teaching? That's not, I mean, right here in God's word, we are instructed otherwise. There is a test, a test that we're a part of, but there's a test that we can put on whoever's performing these things. So, absolutely. So the moment they say to go and follow other gods, we know that they are a false prophet. I'm sure there's plenty more that can be said around a lot of that, but, you know, and then this, with the second question, is current events. And how does, like prophecy, you know, because no, we haven't heard of anybody, although if you're on social media, there's plenty of people talking about how all of this fits in.
And the Pope even named who it was.
Well, and so, you know, we need to definitely be careful because for 2,000 years, there's been a lot of war, and a lot of war in that area. And there's been plenty of times over 2,000 years where everybody, every, like, the Christians, and the vast majority of them in certain areas of the world, were losing their minds because they thought it was the end. Could have been Attila the Hun, could have been Chigis Khan, it could have been, you know, the Black Plague, or the Black Death, and, you know, even carrying forward to, you know, yeah, barbarian tribes, whatever it might be. I mean, the fall of Rome. Right? To barbarian tribes. Rome had fallen, and yet, you know, Constantinople was still alive and well, but still, just for the West to fall like that, that was, oh man, that was earth shaking. Because that had become their theological center. World War I, World War II, boy, the world saw things that they had never seen before. Especially in World War I, trench warfare and all, oh man. A world undone. That, G.K. Meyer, that is a fantastic book on World War I, there's a shameless plug. But still, as, you know, we talk about this, we are, we, this is our life, that we are sharing this time and space together and going through these things, and we naturally think that whatever's going on is like the most important thing that's ever happened. And we just need to look a little bit bigger, a little bit broader, and to see how some of these things line up and fall in. So, do not be swayed if somebody does stand up and they're proclaiming all these crazy things. If things do get bad, really bad, if hard times come, and they come to every country, it doesn't mean it's the end. And that's why, like, I, absolutely, when we are in Revelation, when people ask me about the rapture or whatever else, I'm just like, there's a message to persevere. We have a responsibility and a ministry to stick to, and not to be distracted. And when it's hard times, boy, that, that is when the harvest is ready. Sadly, that's when the workers are fewest. And so we need to have that mentality now, and to be out there, and to be a part of that harvest, to be a part of even just still sowing seed, and nourishing, and encouraging one another, and encouraging those new in the faith, or even sharing hope, a message of salvation, the gospel, with those who don't know Christ. So, yeah, that's a, that is my encouragement to that. So please, even if this whole thing spins way out of control, and it very easily could, there's all kinds of hotspots all over the world, but it doesn't change our job, doesn't change the mission that we have. Yes?
For the Lord, or...
Oh, that's a fantastic question. And a great way of segueing right back into, everybody saw what she did there, right? Alright, so Revelation 11, looking at verse 6. "They have the power to shut up the sky so that rain will not fall during the days of their prophesying; and they have power over the waters to turn them into blood and to strike the earth with every plague as often as they desire." So, just to back up a little bit, because we got into chapter 11 last week, definitely didn't make it very far, but, so we have the two witnesses. This is the second part of an interlude vision that John is receiving, and many scholars think that this is in regards to the church. So the first part of this vision was the angel that was standing on the water and on the land, and had a small scroll that was to be given to John. He was to eat it, it was sweet as honey in his mouth, but sour or bitter in his stomach. And we had read extensively from Ezekiel in this regard. There was a lot of parallels there. In Ezekiel, the scroll was one of lament, it was one of woe, which is a fascinating connection, and maybe a little bit of insight into the sourness or the bitterness of the scroll, of the message itself. And so here, in the second part of this vision, we have the two witnesses. So there's two witnesses who are on the earth and who are prophesying, and the question that we just got is, what was the message that they were actually prophesying? And it actually doesn't say. It doesn't say, all that we, and not to assume too much, but it quickly rolls right into these, their powers of judgment, of not necessarily defending themselves, but of bringing down judgment immediately on these people around them. So one would assume that that prophetic word was one of judgment, maybe a call to repentance. But, it doesn't say. So not to speak, or be too presumptuous about that. So you could probably weight it a little bit onto repentance. Could it be the gospel message? These judgments are maybe not like part of the prophetic mission, but yet, like what we see, is a way of protecting themselves. And we saw how much Moses and Elijah figured heavily within these two witnesses. And even the calling down of fire, Elijah doing that with the groups of 50 that were coming to arrest him. So, yeah, we see some of those parallels from elsewhere in Scripture. But as far as definitively what that message is, I don't know. I don't know. Yes?
So who do they think that they are?
Who do they think they are? That sounded really bad, but, who do they think they are, calling down judgment on these people? No, no, that's, I know that's not what you meant. So, who are these two witnesses? So a couple of different options that we had talked about in the beginning was, one, it's the church. It's the church. So not to be confused by, well, but there's two of them. Well, we talked about why is there two of them? Well, it, every testimony is upheld by two or three witnesses, right? And so, we have two witnesses here. Not a coincidence that a lot of what we see in the judgments, the powers that they have, and even their role as messengers, as witnesses, leans towards like Moses and Elijah. Now, some people literally believe that this is Moses and Elijah. Don't forget, there was a pretty cool appearance elsewhere in the New Testament of Moses and Elijah. Peter even called it out and offered to make tents for them. So, so that lends itself to a very literal interpretation, albeit an assumption of who they are. But generally, there is a, you know, kind of continuing with the symbolism within the vision, that it doesn't necessarily have to be two specific people, but it could just be the empowerment of the church at this time. Now, that leads us into verse 7. "As soon as their ministry has been fulfilled," actually, let's read verse 7. "When they have finished their testimony, the beast that comes up out of the abyss will make war with them, and overcome them, and kill them. So as soon as their ministry has been fulfilled, the witnesses are no longer protected from physical harm. The beast of the abyss attacks and kills them. Here for the first time, we meet a figure who represents the major antagonist of the church in the last days. In contrast to the lamb who bears the marks of slaughter, he is the beast. His demonic origin and character are portrayed by the fact that he comes up from the abyss, which Luke chapter 8 verse 31 references the abyss as being the haunt of demons. The definite article indicates that he is a well-known figure. It may be a reference to the beast of Daniel, chapter 7, verse 7. I think we read a little bit last time from them, but let's go ahead and go to Daniel 7. Reading verse 7. "After this, I kept looking in the night visions, and behold, a fourth beast dreadful and terrifying and extremely strong; and it had large iron teeth, it devoured and crushed, and trampled down the remainder with its feet. And it was different from all the beasts that were before it, and it had ten horns. While I was contemplating the horns, behold, another horn, a little one came up among them; and three of the first horns were pulled out by the roots before it. And behold, this horn possessed eyes like the eyes of a man, and a mouth uttering great boasts." So as, it may be a reference to the beast of Daniel 7:7, who had become a familiar representation of Antichrist. Or it may anticipate the detailed presentation in chapters 13 and 17. So this is a little, so what that means is this could be a little bit of foreshadowing from John, because in 13 and 17, we're gonna see this beast again. This is the first mention of this beast. And all of a sudden, I mean, there's no like background or anything like that, boom, comes up and kills the two witnesses. Uh-oh, so, and I talked about this maybe a couple weeks ago. What we're gonna get into in the next few chapters is not in chronological order, but could easily fit back inside what we've already read. That as we are approaching this, this is not necessarily in chronological order, this could easily be layered in its approach, or circling back on itself.
That's not confusing at all.
That's not confusing at all, that's right, that's right. So, and you know, like to that- So, and you know, like to that, it, it's important to remember that what we're reading is, is apocalyptic literature. It's God's word. So first and foremost, right? Not, don't misunderstand me. But it's apocalyptic literature. It's a very specific style of writing. We're not reading a history book either. I think a lot of times maybe in our minds, like we're, we're creating our own equation where God knows the future. He's giving this message to the prophets. So he's really writing this history book in reverse and giving it ahead of time. And so we're, we're approaching this like, oh, it's just laid out nice and neat like we read our history books. Where it's like, oh, and this day, and then this date, and then this happened. And you know, whether it's, oh, we know there's a whole lot of things that happened between those big events. But you know, we're not concerned with those. And so what we're reading here are just the big events. That, is that the filter? Is that the lens that we see this through? I'm here to tell you that that's not necessarily the case. The most important piece of this is the message. It's not the timeline. It's not even certain figures, right? The main antagonist. It's the message of a persevering church. It's a message that John, as he was given and recording it, was sending it to churches that were undergoing or about to undergo persecution, and many of the people that he knew were going to be martyred. Now, if we keep that at the forefront of our mind and we read through this, there's a whole lot of hope. Because who holds the keys to death? And eternity? Christ. Who is responsible for the judgment? Not the devil. It's God. Who is holding this promise of a new heaven and new earth? And to be with him and there will be no more mourning or suffering? God. That's the message to hold on to. That's the message to hold on to in the worst of times. Especially in times when, when you lose your home for being a Christian. When you lose your loved ones because they were Christians. That was the context in which John was writing. And we have to remember that. If we could just keep that in, in the forefront of our minds as we're reading this, we read it differently. 2,000 years later, we're looking for a roadmap of when Jesus is coming back. And if I can plan my 401k around that. Yeah. Good time for a question? But not identified as demonic.
Right. So is this beast here from God? So I'm kind of confused a little bit about what's-
Is everything that comes out of the abyss demonic?
That would be a good way to wrap it all up.
So let's go to Luke eight, 31, which is the reference that I made before. And this is Jesus encountering Legion. And Jesus asked him, "What is your name?" And he said, "Legion, for many demons had entered him. They were imploring him not to command them, to go away into the abyss." So even as a scriptural backup that Mounts was including with that, I don't think really means like that goes along with that intent. So the abyss is not necessarily a demonic place. The demons don't even want to go there. So the abyss is something that maybe is just, it's a place reserved for these other entities. Now, the beast, so, so this is where the imagery is going to get a little bit confusing. And not to jump ahead a little bit, but a lot of times when we see water, water becomes metaphorical for people groups. For people. And so this beast coming out of the abyss, and the abyss is not just a hole in the ground, but actually at the deepest part of the ocean. Like so is, is associated with water and the chaos therein. Everybody confused? So, so I personally would not hold that to be demonic. But the beast that does come up out of the abyss is raging against the Christians. And I think it's in that line of thought that anything that would be going against the church would constitute demonic, excuse me, a demonic entity. Just because demons seem to be against everything that Christ is and everything aligned with Christ. So we have more of a theological projection onto certain aspects of the text. So we, we have a theological principle that anything against Christ is demonic. Demons are against God, or they've rebelled, or they are against Christ. And anything aligned with Christ, so, oh, we know this beast coming up out of the abyss is against Christians. So it must be demonic. We just don't have that textual designation. Like, I mean, obviously elsewhere in the New Testament, oh, well, this spirit's demonic. And then we have the Holy Spirit. And so it kind of, we have these differing pieces to it. So does that make sense? I guess there's a point where like all theological projection aside, I'm a little bit more like careful how I use those words. And mind you, I don't hold a candle to Mounts or anybody else like that. So let me just be very clear. But it's in my own, the way I read scripture, the way I like talk about it. You know, if it doesn't say demonic, I'm not going to say demonic. So, but yeah, that was reading from Mounts there.
I also find it interesting-
Was that too convoluted for anybody? Everybody following on that, tracking? Is that, okay. All right, splitting hairs. Okay.
I also find it interesting that I'm trying to kill them.
Yeah, right. So with the two witnesses, yeah, there's going to be a lot of chaos and the people, people are going to want to kill the two witnesses. And, and as a defense, they're calling down judgment on them. Like that, as they are coming against them, that judgment's already been passed. And so they are killed. Yep. So. It's interesting. Yep. So, and just so you know, if you're kind of projecting like current state of things onto the text, fire from above is not missiles or nuclear devices. Okay.
Is there any reason to suppose that the beast is Satan?
Is there any way that the beast is Satan? So we will get way more into this in the coming chapters. Yeah. No, it's, it's a great question. But we'll, we'll get there. So. There you go. That's it teaser. Just going to leave it at that. So, all right. So reading on a little bit here. "So at that moment, all that John wishes to do is set forth the death of the witnesses at the hand of the beast, as the little horn of Daniel seven made war with the saints. So the beast of the abyss overcomes and kills the two witnesses. The verb attack in the New King James says, 'make war,' supports the interpretation of the witnesses as a large group rather than two individuals. The scene is the last epic struggle between the kingdoms of the earth and the witnessing church. The very word witness has the grim flavor of martyrdom." Everybody remember that? We talked about that early on, the word martyr. It's the word witness. So. "What is true in this last conflict has also been true of the massacres of history in which brute force has seemed to triumph over truth and righteousness." Verse eight. "And their bodies will lie in the street of the great city, which mystically is called Sodom in Egypt, where also their lord was crucified." Mystically. It's like a bad word within evangel, evangelicalism. But here we are. It's in your Bible. "The bodies of the martyr witnesses are left unburied on the broad street of the great city. From the eastern point of view, to be deprived of burial was an act of great indignity." Which I think we would all say the same thing here. Not just in the east, but in the west. I think anywhere somebody dies and you just leave the body out. That's pretty dishonorable, right? Tobit from the Apocrypha learned that one of his countrymen had been strangled and left dead in the marketplace. He jumped up from a ceremonial meal, went and took the body to one of the outbuildings until he could bury it after the sun went down. Tobit, chapter two, also a reference Jeremiah, chapter eight, verses one and two. "The majority of commentators take the great city to be Jerusalem, in spite of the fact that in the seven other references in Revelation, it consistently refers to Rome." So here are the seven other references. Revelation 16, 19. So chapter 16, verse 19. Chapter 17, verse 18. Chapter 18, verse 10. Verse 16. Verse 18. Verse 19 and verse 21, all of chapter 18 there. Anybody need me to say those again? Okay. So it consistently refers to Rome in each of those cases. "The identification rests primarily on the last clause of verse eight, which seems to identify the great city as the place where their lord was crucified. The references normally cited to argue that the title had been used of Jerusalem are non-biblical. The great city also bore the figurative titles of Sodom and Egypt. But while Isaiah, chapter one, verses nine and 10, and Ezekiel 16, verses 46 through 49 are usually cited as places where Jerusalem is called Sodom. In the Isaiah passage, it is the Jewish people, not the city, who are so designated. And in Ezekiel, Jerusalem is being compared with her sisters Samaria and Sodom. In neither reference is Jerusalem actually called Sodom, and in the Old Testament is never designated Egypt. "In view of the consistent use of the term elsewhere in the book as a reference to Rome, as well as such verses as chapter 18, verse 24, in her was found the blood of prophets and of the saints. It is best to conclude that the witnesses meet their death at the hands of the Antichrist, whose universal dominion was in John's day epitomized by the power of Rome." "The inclusion of a reference to the crucifixion is not to identify a geographical location, but to illustrate the response of paganism to righteousness. The great city is every city and no city. It is civilized man and organized community." That quote? "The great city is every city and no city. It is civilized man and organized community."
So the cruc, what about the, where the crucifixion was again?
Yeah. So the focus is not on the geographical location of where the crucifixion took place, but who brought about the crucifixion? So once again, as what would be the only reference to the city, geographical city of Jerusalem falls in line with the other seven references to Rome. So everywhere else the great city is mentioned, it refers to Rome very, I mean explicitly. But here, it's that last little adage of where their lord was crucified that just, oh, Jerusalem, everybody knows that. Well, but the focus is on who's causing that. So Sodom refers to the depths of moral, oh, I'm sorry, spiritually or allegorically, it is Sodom and Egypt. Sodom refers to the depths of moral degradation. And Egypt is a symbol of oppression and slavery. The great city in which the martyr church lies dead is the world under the wicked and oppressive sway of the Antichrist. So, uh, let's see. So Lewis was writing an article on living in an atomic age. It's found in a collection called Present Concerns Journalistic Essays. So in this, C.S. Lewis writes, "In one way, we think a great deal too much of the atomic bomb. How are we to live in an atomic age? I am tempted to reply, why, as you would have lived in the 16th century when the plague visited London almost every year. Or as you would have lived in a Viking age when raiders from Scandinavia might land and cut your throat any night. Or indeed, as you are already living in an age of cancer, an age of syphilis, an age of paralysis, an age of air raids, an age of railway accidents, an age of motor accidents. In other words, we do not let us begin, do not let us begin by exaggerating the novelty of our situation. Believe me, dear sir or madam, you and all whom you love were already sentenced to death before the atomic bomb was invented. And quite a high percentage of us were going to die in unpleasant ways. We had indeed one very great advantage over our ancestors and aesthetics. But we have that still. It is perfectly ridiculous to go about whimpering and drawing long faces because the scientists have added one more chance of painful and premature death to a world which already bristled with such chances and in which death itself was not a chance at all, but a certainty. This is the first point to be made and the first action to be taken is to pull ourselves together. If we are all going to be destroyed by an atomic bomb, let that bomb, when it comes, find us doing sensible in human things. Praying, working, teaching, reading, listening to music, bathing the children, playing tennis, chatting to our friends over a pint and a game of darts. Not huddled together like frightened sheep and thinking about bombs. They may break our bodies, a microbe can do that, but they need not dominate our minds." C.S. Lewis. Yep. A pint and darts. There you go. Well, actually that was from an article that came out in 2020. So. Just in a better way. All right. There you go. So verse nine, everybody ready to go, jump back in? Any questions before we move forward? I know, boy, the energy level, it's just like all the energy got sucked out of the room there in that last five or 10 minutes. It's a lot to process. It really is. And I mean, and I recognize that with preconceived notions of the two witnesses and I mean, just reconciling everything we're talking about with the Left Behind series would just leave you exhausted. So. I recognize that. I, I want to. Like I just, just going to call that out. And because a lot of, if you've held on to a certain notion about something and you're presented with different information, it's like, like the first five minutes does not compute, right? And then all of a sudden you're like, oh, it's that trickle effect. And okay, wait a second. All right. I see how this all comes together. So, you know, but like I was saying before, this is just one perspective. Or if I include other perspectives wrapped into it, you know, it's, at the end of the day, it's that message that we were talking about at the beginning that we have to hold on to. It's not just the logistics of Revelation, right? It's not the timeline of it that is our concern. So, so as we're talking about this, no, here's our zooming out, here we are in the middle of this chapter, or the middle of this section, we zoom out. Know that, and remember, the focus is not, oh, Luke, are you saying I'm gonna have power to call fire down from heaven? That's not the message here. The message is, don't be surprised if the masses turn against us, turn against Christ and those who follow him. Don't be surprised if it's government sanctioned and sponsored.
To some degree.
Yeah. So, but we've not seen anything yet. That, that, that's a whole thing, and so, so, so remember, as we're talking about this, those are some of the big nuggets to take away. So. Yeah.
So, tell me how much damage was really done with the Left Behind series?
I never read those books, so maybe that's a good thing.
How much damage was done by the Left Behind books?
Well, from the standpoint that it makes people aware that something is going to happen.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, you know what, I, um, where do I go with this one? That's right, cut, cut feed. No, you know what, like, the Left Behind series did a lot to get people interested in Revelation again, I will say that much. And listen, if something like that got a whole bunch of people reading their Bibles, great. You know, do I agree with the interpretation and with how, you know, and where it goes from there with artistic license? No, I don't, I, on many, on many, many accounts, right? But, um, but yeah, I mean, the reason we're talking about it, twenty years after it comes out, or twenty-five years, boy, when did that come out? I can't remember, was it late nineties, mid nineties, or was it early two thousands? Boy, but here we are, twenty years later, still talking about it, right? It's a, it's a reference point, and all of a sudden getting people really like thinking about the end times. But, yeah, I mean, definitely missed a lot of points, I mean, not just, you know, scripturally, like in, in that level of interpretation, but even the overall message, right? And once again, like, if it left off with a message of perseverance, whew, boy, I would have been amening that, like, you know, but, but I don't think that's a message that people walk away with. So. And, yeah, so that's all I want to say about that, because, you know, I mean, that's, that's an interpretation, they stuck to that, and then overlaid it with some artistic license, and made a series on it, so. Made a lot of money too, and so. Nineteen ninety-five, see, I thought it was. Blockbuster was still in business. There we go, so, so anyways, yeah, it's, you're right, yeah, so, yeah, we did, we did mention that last week, I think. So the, another op, uh, option, I thought you could say it like that. Another interpretation of who the two witnesses could be. So we'd said Moses, Elijah, we'd said the church. And then another option is Enoch and Elijah, because we don't have their deaths recorded in scripture. Enoch walked with God and was no more, and Elijah being taken up and fired chariot. Although we get a letter from Elijah later, actually, the king did. King, he has a belief, got a letter from Elijah a couple chapters later, so that's kind of funny, most people don't realize that, so, all right. Yep, thank you, Harry. Anybody else, any other questions? I will not, I will not trash the Left Behind series anymore, so. Okay, so, verse nine. "Those from the peoples and tribes and tongues and nations will look at their dead bodies for three and a half days and will not permit their dead bodies to be laid in a tomb. So the dead bodies of the two witnesses are left lying on the streets of the great city, where they are viewed by people of every race and nationality. The three and a half days of their public exposure correspond to the one thousand two hundred and sixty days of their prophetic activity. In comparison, it is a brief period of time. We have already noted that denial of a proper burial was an act of indignates, and reflected the scorn of the world for the church that had called them to repentance. The dead bodies of the witnesses are not symbols of a spiritually dead church, but portray the destiny of the faithful who hold their convictions firm till the end. Remember to Smyrna, John wrote, 'Be faithful even to the point of death, and I will give you the crown of life,' Revelation two ten." Also, look, contrast the peoples and tribes and tongues and nations, contrast that with Revelation five, where Jesus is being worshiped for redeeming by his blood individuals from those specific points. Verse ten. "And those who dwell on the earth will rejoice over them and celebrate, and they will send gifts to one another, because these two prophets tormented those who dwell on the earth. When the followers of the beast realize that those who have tormented their consciences are dead, they are overjoyed, in effect, a holiday is declared with merymaking and the exchange of gifts. Their torment, consisting of denunciation and physical affliction, had lasted for three and a half years, but now it was over, and rejoicing was in order. The inhabitants of the earth is another designation for the pagan world, as described in the preceding verse. It supports the interpretation of the great city as the whole earth. God's truth, through the testimony of faithful witnesses, was always distressed, and the distress, the consciousness, consciences of evil men. To Ahab, the prophet Elijah was a troubleer of Israel, First Kings eighteen seventeen. Herod feared John the Baptist, yet heard him gladly, Mark six twenty. The world has always shown hostility to the message of God, a truth that ought to give some concern to the contemporary church, existing for the most part rather comfortably in a world of increasing wickedness. "The celebration of the earth's inhabitants over the death of the witnesses is a perverse counterpart to the Jewish feast of Purim, a day of joy and feasting, a day forgiving presents to each other and gifts to the poor," Esther nine nineteen, and verse twenty-two as well. "Some have suggested as another parallel the period between the crucifixion and the resurrection. Of this time, Jesus said that the disciples will weep and mourn while the world rejoices," John, chapter sixteen, verse twenty. John sixteen, verse twenty. So I thought that was an interesting comparison with Purim, or contrast with Purim. So, Purim was a day set aside by the casting of lots, that's what Purim means, and for the destruction of the Jewish people in the Persian Empire. But Esther intercedes on behalf of the Jewish people, and it's found out, and even though the law was not overturned, because it could not have been, that, that was unheard of in the Persian Empire, they made a new law that the Jewish people were to defend themselves. And so, it kind of went from there, and even in the text, it shows, it says that many converted to Judaism during that time. So, there you go. Verse eleven. "But after the three and a half days, the breath of life from God came into them, and they stood on their feet, and great fear fell upon those who were watching them. So the merriment of the world is cut short, for after three and a half days, God sends the breath of life into the dead bodies of the witnesses. So then, stand again, who then stand again on their feet. The language of this verse follows the vision recorded in Ezekiel thirty-seven." You knew it, Jackie. You know that, you. "In which God sends the breath of life into the dry bones, which come to life and stand upon their feet. The reveling is cut short, and terror strikes the inhabitants of the earth, who have just witnessed this remarkable event. Since murder is the last resort, what can be done about those who rise from the dead? The resurrection of the church is a sure indication that God possesses the ultimate authority over life and death." Verse twelve. "And they heard a loud voice from heaven, saying to them, 'Come up here.' Then they went up into heaven in the cloud, and their enemies watched them." So the two witnesses are now summoned by a loud voice from heaven and ascend in full view of their startled enemies. They go up into heaven, not merely to heaven, in a cloud. In Second Kings, chapter two, verse eleven, Elijah is taken up into heaven in a whirlwind. "The voice from heaven is heard by the two witnesses, and probably everyone else, although some manuscripts read, 'I heard,' and restrict the verb to John. The triumph of the witnesses is no secret rapture, it is openly visible to all." So Matthew, chapter twenty-four, verse twenty-seven, for reference. Verse thirteen. "And in that hour there was a great earthquake, and a tenth of the city fell. Seven thousand people were killed in the earthquake, and the rest were terrified, and gave glory to the God of heaven. As the witnesses are taken up into heaven, a great earthquake levels a portion of the city, killing seven thousand, and forcing the rest to acknowledge the transcendent majesty of God." Ezekiel, chapter thirty-eight, predicted a great earthquake that would precede the end. So let's go to Ezekiel thirty-eight. Starting at verse seventeen. "Thus says Yahweh Elohim, Are you the one of whom I spoke in former days, through my servants, the prophets of Israel, who prophesied in those days for many years, that I would bring you against them? It will come about on that day when God comes against the land of Israel, declares Yahweh Elohim, that my fury will mount up in my anger. In my zeal and in my blazing wrath, I declare that on that day there will surely be a great earthquake in the land of Israel. The fish of the sea, the birds of the heavens, the beasts of the field, all the creeping things that creep on the earth, and all the men who are on the face of the earth will shake at my presence. The mountains also will be thrown down, the steep pathways will collapse, and every wall will fall to the ground. I will call for a sword against him on all my mountains, declares Yahweh Elohim. Every man's sword will be against his brother. With pestilence and with blood, I will enter into judgment with him, and I will reign on him and on his troops, and on the many peoples who are with him. A torrential rain with hailstorm, hailstones, fire, and brimstone. I will magnify myself, sanctify myself, and make myself known in the sight of many nations. And they will know that I am Yahweh." Wow. Wow. You don't see that on inspirational posters. Church artwork or anything like that, come on. I think it should, it's pretty cool. Just a reminder of who we worship, right? Could you imagine that, like, on the back of the worship center, right next to the screens? Just remember who you're worshiping. Well, fresh reminder, you know, you have John three sixteen, but then boom, Ezekiel thirty-eight. Who put this paneling up underneath the ark? Take that down, oh, there's the rest of the story. Oh, we're still recorded, all right, so. So Zechariah says that the Mount of Olives will be split in two from east to west when God returns to crush his enemies. Zechariah fourteen, four. "Although the earthquake may symbolize some great upheaval in the social order," Haggai, chapter two, for reference. It's okay if you're confused. Like, is this literally an earthquake? Is this just metaphorical language, allegorical even? Here is in Revelation, chapter six, verse twelve. "It is part of an apocalyptic vision that portrays, in a literal manner, the events yet to come. The tenth part of the city that collapsed would be a sizable portion, but not enough to disable it. The figure of seven thousand does not seem to have any particular meaning beyond serving to indicate the approximate, approximate number of individuals in one-tenth of a good-sized city in John's day." So, seventy thousand, right? "Scholars differ in their interpretation of the response of the world to this demonstration of divine power. The text simply says that those who were not killed were terrified and gave glory to the God of heaven. Some think that, unlike the survivors of chapter nine, verses twenty and twenty-one, just so we're all on the same page. Verses twenty and twenty-one of chapter nine say, 'The rest of mankind, who were not killed by these plagues, did not repent of the work of their hands, so as not to worship demons and the idols of gold and of silver and the brass and of stone and of wood, which can neither see nor hear nor walk; and they did not repent of their murders, nor of their sorceries, nor of their immorality, nor of their thefts. These turn from their apostasy into repentance. It is argued that John was more optimistic about the conversion of the world than he is commonly given credit for. But while universalism is an outcome that few would not favor, it runs counter to the clear teaching of scripture concerning the serious consequences of spurning the love of God in Christ Jesus." It is accurate to conclude, it is not accurate to conclude that these verses that were retributive, tributive, ah, retrib-, tongue tied, all right. There was retribution. Punishment had failed to bring men to repentance, the death of the martyrs would succeed, because it was not the death of the martyrs, but their being brought back to life that struck terror to the hearts of their enemies and caused them to give glory to God. Revelation thirteen, three through four specifically says that the whole world was astonished and followed the beast. They worshiped the dragon, and they also worshiped the beast. No indication of universal salvation here. A scholar by the name of Kittel is correct in his view that in that day, the great mass of mankind will have committed the unpardonable crime of deifying evil. They give glory to God when they are compelled by overriding terror to recognize that the true Lord is Christ and not Antichrist. This falls far short of a redemptive turning to God and praising him for who he is and what he has done. This scene does not stand in contrast to chapter six, verses fifteen through seventeen, in which the inhabitants of the world hid in caves and called on the rocks and mountains to fall on them. The two scenes are parallel. Although the term God of heaven is frequent in Jewish writings, it occurs only here and in chapter sixteen, verse one, in the New Testament, God of heaven. Let's look at chapter sixteen, just for reference. So what's saying here in chapter, or in chapter eleven, verse thirteen, is they were terrified and gave glory to the God of heaven. Turn over to sixteen here, "When I heard a loud voice from the temple, saying to the seven angels, 'Go and pour out on the earth the seven bowls of the wrath of God.'" Oh, sixteen, oh. I'll double check, double check that. Oh, sixteen eleven, typo, my bad. "And they blasphemed the God of heaven." Let me read verse 10 and 11. "Then the fifth angel poured out his bowl on the throne of the beast, and his kingdom became darkened, and they gnawed their tongues because of pain. And they blasphemed the God of heaven because of their pains and their sores, and they did not repent of their deeds." There you go. The source may be Daniel, chapter 2, verses 17 through 19, where the title reflects the majesty and wisdom of God, without any specific contrast with the gods of the Chaldeans. Let's go to Daniel, chapter 2. Just so we know where some of these names come from, right? Daniel 2, 17 through 19. "Then Daniel went to his house and informed his friends, Hananiah, Michael, and Azariah, about the matter." Just so you know, those are the Hebrew names of Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego. Personal pet peeve of mine, because Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego are their Hebrew names translated into Chaldean. So whereas one of the names means to, like, devoted to God, devoted to Yahweh, in Chaldean, it's devoted to Marduk, or a pagan god. So, personal pet peeve. We honor these guys for standing for their faith by proclaiming their names as, like, devoted to these pagan deities. Alright, rant over. So, 17 and 18. So, Hananiah, Michael, and Azariah about the matter, "so that they might request compassion from the God of heaven concerning this mystery, so that Daniel and his friends would not be destroyed with the rest of the wise men of Babylon." So, the God of heaven. Alright, verse 14. "The second woe is past; behold, the third woe is coming quickly." So verse 14 stands alone, separated from the second woe by the visions of chapter 10, verse 1, to chapter 11, verse 13, "and announcing a third woe, which is then postponed until a number of subplots have been brought forward." Alright, question?
So, on 13, I'm a little confused.
Okay.
So, when it says there was a great earthquake, and a tenth of the city fell, blah, 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 and the rest were terrified and gave glory to God, so they were saved. Those people repented, is that? Because I'm not sure, I must have missed something.
Well, it just says that they were terrified and gave glory to God. So it doesn't necessarily mean that they repented, doesn't mean that they were saved. It just, they recognized where this had come from.
Okay.
Oh, from 13 to?
From, sorry, from chapter 11, from 1 to?
Oh, 1 to 13.
Yes.
Got it, okay. So, actually, I'll go back a little bit further, so we're just recapping here. So after the fifth trumpet, we get the sixth trumpet, the army of the east, and we went through all the descriptions on that. Then, there is another vision that takes place. So chapter 10, verse 1, "I saw another strong angel coming down out of heaven, clothed with a cloud, and the rainbow was upon his head, and his face was like the sun, and his feet like pillars of fire." So there's a little bit more of a description there. And so what this introduces is that this angel comes down, and there's a foot on the water, a foot on the land, holding this little scroll. John is instructed to go and take this out of the angel's hand and to eat it. So this vision is like an interlude. So we've gotten up to the sixth trumpet, then there's a pause. And there was a pause before, and it too had to do with the church. So then here, in this pause, this interlude, scholars think that this one also has to do with the church. So it's almost like, as we're talking about these judgments, these things that are happening upon the earth, well, alright, let's take a pause, let's regroup here, let's make sure we're all on the same page. Here's what your role is, here's what's going to happen. But let's stay focused. So then there's more judgment. And then all of a sudden, before we're getting into the really crazy stuff, which it's already kind of like accelerating, here's another pause. Okay? So, John, here's a vision for the church. And I'm just going to prepare you for what's to come. Because, because it's going to get ugly. And that's kind of what, like, encapsulated in these two chapters. Sweet as honey, sour or bitter in your stomach. I mean, you're going to see Jesus very soon. Too bad it's going to be your death that's going to lead to that. That's kind of in essence what is being said here. So I mean, that's where, like, whoa, boy, this gets real heavy. But, but keep our eyes on the prize. Right? Like, the Jesus that we have proclaimed, the Jesus that we have maybe avoided the sin in our lives, right? We've kind of fought against that temptation. But really, how much skin do we have in the game? How much has being devoted to Christ wrecked our lives? Let's be honest, it's been socially convenient. Maybe slightly inconvenient when some of our friends wanted to go and do other things. But what John's talking about here, inconvenient doesn't even begin to describe it. This is lose your job for Christ. This is being hated for being a follower of Christ. Being attacked for being a follower of Christ. Being killed for being a follower of Christ. Like, meetings like this wouldn't be happening. Unless it was super-secret and happening in an undisclosed location, right? That only we knew. But the moment somebody, we hear of somebody getting caught that's a part of our group, whoop, we're calling this one off. Because at what point has this whole meeting been compromised? Right? I mean, so like, oof, heavy stuff. So John is having this vision scroll, but now we're shifting gears to these two witnesses. And these two witnesses have a job, a mission, to preach to the world. And it says, I mean, you know, we get totally distracted by a lot of the miraculous stuff that they're able to do, but we miss the fact that they're being attacked. They are being attacked, they're only able to call those judgments down because they're being attacked. It's not a matter of like, hey, should we cause a drought in Canada today or this year? You know, or anything, no, it's a matter of, like, they are being attacked, and they're calling judgment immediately down on these people. And it's for them, as witnesses, preaching to. Now, is this two people, is this the church? Right? And that's some of the different interpretations that we talked about earlier. So wherever the church is, all over the world. Right? But then we're talking about the great city. So there's an individual, the beast, that comes up out of the abyss and kills the two witnesses. Now, we're talking about representation of, you know, the great city and being Rome, and not just the city of Rome, but the empire of Rome. So think of maybe a global empire, is that what it's talking about? So when you see beast, think government. Like, the biggest threat for the church in the first century was government. All of a sudden, we're all monarchists, right? King Jesus. It's the only one we can trust. So, that's what brings us to this point, is that even though they're killed, and look at what is just being interwoven in this. Even if you lose your life as testifying to Christ as king, remember, Jesus is Lord, Caesar is not. So by professing this to the world, and they kill you, God will bring you back to life and bring you to where He is. That's encouraging. Who wants a hero's welcome, right? You know what you got to do. We don't talk about that enough, do we? You know, okay, total side note, but I kind of wonder, do we talk about, like, the little stuff? The minutia of our lives too much? And we miss these bigger ideals that we should be, like, striving and living towards? Like, you know, am I talking to my kids about how they fold their clothes so much that I'm missing the idea of, like, hey, like, live with honor? Like, give respect to get respect? You know, some of those bigger ideals, right? So, I don't know, that's just a random thought, but I think a lot of times that when we talk through these things, we're just, we're missing how big this really is. I mean, this is the stuff that, like, caused Saul, who was religiously going in one direction, with this radical idea of, like, and this is, this is the idea, this is what sends Paul all over the Mediterranean. It's that Jesus is Lord. It's the Messiah-ship of Jesus that he was willing to go to Rome for the opportunity to tell Caesar that he's not Lord. That a lot of the cities that he was ministering in were Roman cities. And like, not just Roman cities, like, oh, they were in the empire of Rome, but these were, like, special Roman cities that, like, Philippi. If you were born in Philippi, it was just, you had your citizenship in Rome itself. There was like a higher citizenship point there. So he's going to Philippi and saying, "Jesus is Lord, Caesar is not." So, there you go.
Do we know where Paul was born?
So, Tarsus. So, so yeah, it's pretty amazing to think about the message that we have. Because that's part of the good news too. It's not just that Jesus went to the cross to atone for our sins. And still within this, like, level of subjugation to the world. That's not it at all. He resurrected to power and authority, Revelation 5. Like, when we talk about Jesus is Lord, we are talking about Him being master over the earth. When we say Lord, I know it's just been in our theological vernacular for our vocabulary since we became a Christian, or heard it, you know, even before we were Christian. But that's what it means. It means that He is king. It means that He is the highest authority. When we say that, that's what we should mean. We should mean it when we say it, because that's actually what it means. And I want to encourage you to wrestle with that, with the authority of Jesus Christ. What does that mean and look like? I mean, because, yeah. How would we live differently? All of a sudden, like, I mean, if you knew that you were reporting to the king on the job and mission that he gave you, right? That he gave himself up, he gave his life up for you, for all of us. Oh, man, it's beautiful. So, it's interesting, because we see God acting to move things forward. Even for what is best for His people, for the refinement of His people. Like, even in the period of the judges. God sends a judge. God also raises up the other tribes to attack Israel when they are going astray. The exile. God wasn't surprised when the Babylonians come knocking on their door. He's the one that raised them up. God isn't just the God of his people, He's the God over the earth. So He's working in all of these other peoples and nations, tribes. But He's concerned about the holiness of His people and how well they represent Him. And that's where we need to read cover to cover and understand who God is, the character of God, and how we can represent Him, and how we can further embody those attributes that He wants to get out there. That's why, when we talk about being transformed into the image of Christ, we see Christ as the embodiment, the perfect embodiment, the model of everything that God, Yahweh, is. As God Himself, right? In flesh. And so, yeah, God can install people into government. God is still in control over the beast. He's in control over the abyss. Nothing's been made outside of His making it. But what people have chosen to do in their free will, in rebellion against Him, or for whatever, is up to them. But God will still utilize that for His purposes.
I guess we have a much bigger picture for what's going on.
God does have a much bigger view, right? But that's all the more reason for us to completely stay in tune with what God is doing. As we've been talking about Jeremiah as a church, Jeremiah was the lone voice. He was going against everybody, right? Everybody's saying the opposite. But what Jeremiah's saying, he's like, "I've got a word from the Lord, He's the one raising up the Babylonians, He's coming to take us over, they're coming to take us over, this is all from the Lord, don't fight Him." Like, I mean, what he's saying is treason. Treason to this earthly government, but in devotion to God, and in concern for God's people, was just yielding to the will of God. And so then there's a choice to be made. And testing these things out. And the message ultimately is repent. It wasn't just give up and don't fight, it was repent. Walk in the holiness that God expects of His people. Because that's just it. I mean, when we are, you know, talking about us as being followers of Jesus Christ, we are representing Jesus Christ. We're not perfect, but man, are we trying? Are we working towards that? In a balance of that love, but also judging rightly, discerning what are the things that belong in my life and not? Do we recognize what sin is in the world? So, yeah, I mean, God, He is looking for His people to be refined, and He will raise up those others. So, but we don't need to, like, get caught up with a lot of that, you know, and to the point where it's bringing about paralysis, as, you know, in our, in our lives or in these moments. But it should cause us to go to the Lord in prayer. And to ask that big question, "Lord, is this of you?" Now, could you say, "Yeah, it's all of me"? But then, more specifically is, "Lord, is this the action I need to take? Is this the action that you're calling me to?" And we can have those biblical filters of, is this bringing us towards holiness? Is this bringing us to that? Is this bringing us to that mission that you have called us to carry out? And even individually for each of our lives, and the people that we know, and our families, and friends, and so on and so forth. So, I mean, to, to take care of the oppressed, to take care of the poor, widows, orphans, I mean, you know, like all, all the things in the text that, and you know, and there's a, there's a, the Bible says a lot, right? And that's the biggest understatement for tonight, but it says a lot. But we gotta be in it, and we gotta know it, we gotta read it, read it for our own instruction. I mean, there's not going to be a Bible test to get into heaven. And this is, it's not just a religious exercise, the exercise is putting it into practice. That's why it's been recorded, is so that we can be refined today, that over 4,000, 6,000 years of God's people, can we learn from, can we learn from the period of the judges? Can we learn from the period of the exile? And let's do better, let's do better. And even in face of, you know, Ananias and Sapphira in the New Testament, in the face of many of the others, like, can we, like, can we live up to that? Can we do better? Yeah, yeah, and that's, yep, it's keeping in mind the bigger picture as we are getting into the detail, and even what we're going to read in the next few chapters, right? With the seventh trumpet, chapter 12, all the imagery, 13, we're going to get into more of the beast and a lot of those descriptions, and it's going to be a lot of stuff to get really caught up in. These are the chapters that, oh, boy, the speculation is endless. I mean, it really is, and that's when all the names get, you know, thrown out and everything else of like who it could be, who this beast could be today and different things, but we're not to get caught up in that. Not at all. It doesn't change the mission. So, yeah, that's, thank you. It's a good primer before we move on into like everything else. So, yeah, so, does that kind of a summary with it? See, I didn't forget, I didn't forget. I think I nailed it like, like in the first two minutes of my little diatribe here. So, so, yeah, so, so that's kind of 10 and 11 in its own nutshell, as we move forward into some of this other, so, absolutely. So, we got about three minutes left. What, that's right. So what I want to do is finish reading 11. So let's start at verse 15. "Then the seventh angel sounded, and there were loud voices in heaven, saying, 'The kingdom of the world has become the kingdom of our Lord and of His Christ, and He will reign forever and ever.'" Boy, that could have saved me the last 10 minutes, I could have just read that. "And the twenty-four elders who sit on their thrones before God fell on their faces and worshipped God, saying, 'We give you thanks, O Lord God, the Almighty, who are and who were, because you have taken your great power and have begun to reign.' And the nations were enraged, and your wrath came, and the time came for the dead to be judged, and the time to reward your bond servants, the prophets and the saints, and those who fear your name, and the small and the great, and to destroy those who destroyed the earth. And the temple of God, which is in heaven, was opened, and the ark of his covenant appeared in his temple; and there were flashes of lightning, and sounds, and peals of thunder, and an earthquake, and a great hailstorm.'" That would have been fantastic if it was a trumpet, so. So, so even as just reading through that, that kind of sounds like it could be the end of the book. Like, that's it. I mean, that, it's, oh, the Lord is ruling, there's judgment, that's it. So even just to kind of strengthen that point of what we're reading is not necessarily in chronological order, especially from here on out. Here on out, we're kind of getting a lot more of the subplots, at least for the next five or six chapters. And so we're going to kind of think of, think of it as circling back and giving more detail to things that we've already read, right? So just a little summary here on what we just read. "When the seventh trumpet is blown, we might expect yet another plague, but instead we hear voices in heaven declaring the eternal sovereignty of God and His Christ. The twenty-four elders join the celebration, falling before God in worship and praising Him for taking, for having taken His great power and begun to reign. The time for rewarding His servants and pouring out His wrath on the destroyers of the earth has come." Chapter 11, verses 15 through 19 is a summary of all that is yet to take place. The declaration of triumph by the heavenly host, verse 15, and the anthem of praise by the worshiping elders, verses 17 and 18, introduce the great themes of the following chapters. The extensive use of the Aoris tense 11 times conveys a sense of absolute certainty about the events taking place. There is a common saying, "It's all over bar the shouting." It's all over bar the shouting, and the only difference here is that the shout of victory has already begun. So, there you go.